Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular board meeting of the San Angelo Independent School District. My name is Max Parker, I'm president of the board. We do have a quorum today even though we have three board members, Mr. Lehman, Mr. Dindell, and Lupita that are all out. And so, Dr. Kingman has told me he's on call, so he may be popping in and out. So, we're going to get this, make this board meeting with our remnant of our board team here. But I do appreciate all of you being here. I would like to ask Tony Valdez to come forward to lead us in our invocation. I apologize that I didn't come out to meet you earlier, and I appreciate you being here. He's for the pastor of Edmund Boulevard Baptist Church.
Father, we come in this evening to discuss some of the most precious things to us, music, choir, singing, instruments, so many great things, the talents that you have entrusted us, entrusted in us, oh Lord. But most importantly, we come in this evening to talk about which you've really entrusted, your children upon us, those who you've given to us to care, to grow, to be, to be great citizens of this world, oh Lord. So, as we move into this session, as we move into this meeting, may your mighty hand guide our thoughts, may your lips guide our mouths, and may we always be hearing to each other, and most importantly, to you, in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. All right, now we have two, did we get a third one or just two? All right, we have two of our excellent students from Austin Elementary School, Sebastian Martinez and his sister Ariel Martinez. One, Sebastian's a 3rd grader, Ariel's a 1st grader, and I want you all to stand, they're going to lead us in our pledge to the United States flag and our pledge to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. There we go. Thank you, guys. All right, before we start our meeting, there's a script that we always read to make sure we have it on the record. As I mentioned to you, we welcome everyone that's here, but we also welcome everyone that's watching our meeting online on our public access channel, Southern Link Channel 4. We appreciate all of you and your interest in our students. All the items that we'll be discussing tonight have been posted as required by state law, and as you probably know, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop last week. As members of the SAI SD Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent and staff, prove budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas, including this one, that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on the agenda, and additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes. If anyone wants to speak on any agenda, on any item not on our agenda, please keep in mind that we cannot reply except to thank you for your comments. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAI SD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording would adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members and myself, to please turn off or silence your cellphones. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting. I thank you for taking time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. With that said, I'm going to turn it over now to some of our admin team. I think we're going to start with Dr. Gomez for recognition of athletic trainers and school nurses.
Dr. Detloff, would you mind coming up? I have a lot of things over here. Ms. Porras, do you mind coming to the very front, please? Well, I should have clarified, very front of the nurses, thank you. Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. In the center of our SAI SD educator profile are the words, "Support a dynamic learning environment that is safe, responsive, and adaptable." Because we believe and research shows that students learn best when educators create such environments. The educators we are recognizing tonight do this on a daily basis. In San Angelo ISD, we believe in the value of each employee and we invest in highly qualified human capital. It's with great joy and sincere gratitude we recognize our athletic trainers, registered nurses, licensed vocational nurses, and certified medical assistants. These individuals are genuinely and deeply committed to the health, wellness, and safety of our students and their families. These champions for health, wellness, and safety provide care and services around the clock. Some were unable to join us tonight for various reasons and prior commitments. For those present, as I call your name, if you'd please come forward to be recognized and accept our heartfelt appreciation. You'll come up, you'll get your certificate from Dr. Detloff, and we're going to form a big circle up here, and then you'll shake hands with the board, okay? All right, so we'll start with athletic trainers and talk about working around the clock. So, in the world of athletics, there's always a sporting event. So, we're very happy that Kelsey was able to be here tonight on behalf of our athletic trainers, but please know, the rest of the trainers are working some event as we speak. So, to begin, we have, for Lakeview High School, Kelsey Vanderberg. Also, other trainers, we'll just call them by name, from Lakeview High School, Troy Wildy, from Central High School, Jenny Corbett, Leon Pratt, Sarita Ponse De León. Now, starting with our school nurses, first up, I'm surprised I had a lot of things, Monica Porras, our nurse with administrative duties. All right, I'm going in alpha order here, guys, so... Just going to go by certificate here. Ashley Bates, and we'll clap at the very end, okay? I should have given better instructions. I apologize. Dolores Canales, Mindy Cates, Roxanne Davila, Dawn Dusick, Brandy Eisenbach, Haley Finch, Nana Laird, Brianna Lathers, Tabitha McLaren, Kristi Petrie, Selena Poindexter, Wendy Palhemas, Felicia Reyes, Charlene Sierra, Kayanne Slaughter, Brooke Smith, Tiffany Snowden, Ashley Springer, Corey Stewart, Kristi Torres, Cassie Walden, and Cheryl Walls. Now, you'll turn around this way, Kelsey, if you'll start us, yep, and shake hands.
Thank you so much.
I just learned from Dr. Gomez that Whitney and Molly aren't here, so I'm not sure exactly who's going to be handling the other recognitions. So, let me just, I will say what our next recognition is, and whoever's supposed to handle it can come up. But we're now going to recognize the Central High School and Lakeview High School students selected as Texas All-State musicians.
And Tiffany Hebner will be making those introductions for us.
Good evening, school board members. I'm Tiffany Hebner, the Director of Fine Arts and Advanced Academics, and I'm here to present our All-State musicians. Just a little bit about that, every fall, over 70,000 high school students across Texas audition for the chance to be a Texas All-State musician or vocalist. First, they perform selected music for a panel of judges. If the student is chosen to move on, then they compete against musicians from other regions in their TMEA area. The highest ranking musicians then qualify to perform in one of the Texas All-State ensembles. We are super proud to announce that we have five. Not normal. Very excited. I would like to ask that each of our All-Staters come up with their teachers to the podium. I'll introduce them, and then the student would like to tell you a little bit about their experience at the All-State contest. So, first up is Heidi. Come on up, Heidi. And Heidi, I'm scared to say your last name.
Yes.
This is Heidi Bundick. This is Josh Bailey, who is our band director over at Lakeview. And this is Stephanie Infante, she's our orchestra director, and you'll understand why when she tells you what instrument she's playing. And she played for the All-State band, but watch what instrument she plays.
Hello, I was a part of the All-State band, so my band director and orchestra teacher is here because I played string bass All-State. Not only that, I am a cellist for the orchestra. I also auditioned, I did regionals for orchestra, so that was chaotic. But state, yeah, that was so much fun. I loved playing a part of the band, meeting all the other fellow band students, and also going to this, like, to the convention center and going to go to the floor and see all this other stuff regarding not only band but also orchestra. And as a future music educator, that was really, not only fun, but important to see it through the guise of a student and also a future teacher. I loved the music, and I loved being there with not only all of my teachers but also fellow students, like, like all the other Central, while I might not be very acquainted with them, I still think we're at least strong acquaintances. But yes, it was a very fun experience as both a band and an orchestra, especially being from Lakeview. Thank you.
Where was your competition?
Excuse me?
Where was the competition?
So, regionals was in Greenwood, and then, oh yeah, ARIA was in Levelland. So, regionals was in grade one, ARIA was in Levelland, and then San Antonio.
San Antonio, all right. And you take your string bass, and you help in the marching band also with your string bass?
No, so, I play string bass during concert season, and during marching band, I play keyboard.
Okay, cool. Thank you for being here, congratulations.
Thank you for having me.
We have a lot of talent, love it. So, second is Jason Jones, our director, our band director at Central High School, and he is with Lauren Ochoa, who went to All-State, and we're going to let her tell you about her experience.
Thank you for having me. I'm a 2nd-year All-Stater. I play the B-flat clarinet. This year, I placed in 12th chair in the 6A Concert Band. It was really fun getting to go this year, it was very enjoyable, getting to see all of the incredible talent that's there, and the band director, I learned a lot from him. Just like her, I want to be a future band director as well, so that was a lot of fun. And last year, it was really heartbreaking, making it and not even getting to see where I place in the state. So, this year, I really enjoyed getting to go. Unfortunately, I didn't get to check out the actual convention much since I was in rehearsal all the time, but I did get to check out a few things, and it was incredible, and I'm so excited to try again next year.
What classification are you?
Um...
Junior?
Junior, yes.
Okay, and if you, if your name was said, I missed it, but what's your name?
Lauren Ochoa.
Lauren Ochella, I didn't, I missed that, so congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
So, I forgot to tell you, Heidi, did you say you're a sophomore?
Yes, I am sophomore.
So, we could have potentially more All-Staters.
Mm-hmm.
All right, next I want to introduce Landon Gilmore, who's our choir director at Central High School, and he has Dirk Ross and Elijah Jackson. He had two students that went to All-State, so wants to speak. Going to rock, paper, scissors?
I wrote a speech.
All right.
Well, hi, my name is Elijah Jackson, and I am a 3-year All-Stater. I sing tenor, if you couldn't tell my voice. I made first chair in the All-State Mixed Choir in middle school. When the idea of All-State was introduced to me, I had no idea I would go to high school and earn such a title and have that experience three times in a row. From an outside perspective, it's natural for someone to think that after a second time of making All-State, it's easier to go through the process successfully. It's not. We spent nine months on incredibly hard and detailed music, basically a pregnancy, for just a few days of rehearsal and a single performance. But those few days teach me things like patience, dedication, and what it means to truly be a hard worker. In a choir of 224 talented singers, it felt as special as if it were me performing a solo at the talent show or a solo in the All-State choir, which fortunately, I got to do for the second time. But I felt this way because I know that I worked hard to be here through my love for music. I was able to represent that love for my school in front of 5,000-plus people, so thank you.
Do you... Just a quick question.
I'm so sorry.
What plans, if any, do you have in the future using your talents?
I want to study musical performance at UNT in Denton, and I also feel like I need to go into music business because I think it'd be, to start a business, and maybe music education, so yeah.
Okay, congratulations again.
Thank you so much.
I also...
Good evening.
Oh, good evening, I'm sorry. I also prepared a little speech, and so I placed 4th at ARIA, and I made the Tenor-Bass Choir. And I started my freshman year with almost no interest in choir, my mom kind of made me do it. I soon grew to enjoy making music. Due to an injury in football, I left football and focused my time and energy into choir. And after seeing other people, such as Elijah and other All-Staters that I've seen make it in the past, I knew that I wanted to be a part of the great high school musicians that have made All-State. And so, this past summer, I committed to an All-State camp at Tarleton. I dedicated most of my free time to practicing this music. This taught me a great deal about self-discipline, taking initiative, and using my time wisely. All of these things helped me to make All-State and also become a better student. Something really unique about my All-State experience was that I got to be a part of a documentary that's being filmed, there is some time this year, about the oral music in America and the effect that it has on our students. Other really cool things were getting to work with professionals every day, getting to meet well-known composers, and lastly, working with a group of students that are all similar to my age, that all care as much as I do about making great music. And the best part is just being able to show that off through nine months of hard work to people that also recognize and care. Just the whole thing has been amazing, and it helped me open my eyes to a new idea of career paths, the music educating that I would have known before.
Again, I may have missed it, but what's your name and what grade are you in?
Dirk Ross, and I am in 12th grade.
You're a senior, all right. Congratulations, thank you.
They won't be back next, but good luck. Okay, next we have Emily Hall-Rocha. She is the orchestra teacher at Central High School, and with her, we have Gregory Fott. I'll let him say if you were.
Hello, I'm Gregory Fott, and I'm a junior at Central High School. I made first chair, string bass, in the Symphonyetta Orchestra, and it was a really good opportunity to have, to go to All-State, and I liked being able to meet new people and really great and talented musicians. Music was different and challenging. It's overall a great experience, and I hope I get to go next year.
And you just said it, and I already missed it. What grade are you in?
I'm a junior.
Junior, so you have another year. So, congratulations to you, thank you.
Dr. D, do you want to take pictures with our All-Staters?
I would love to.
Okay, while you're getting up here, I have to tell you guys, I had the pleasure of going to see these students, and I grew up going to the symphony my whole life. They beat the symphony any day of the week. I told my parents, "Cancel your symphony tickets, this is what you do every year." And I thought, after seeing one show, I was like, "Yeah, the next one can't be as good." Yeah, it was. So, if you're ever down, you know, to San Antonio around, it's usually around Valentine's Day, it's worth every bit of it, and I think it's only like $15 or $20 for the day for you to see these shows. It's amazing. Well, it turned me down, I had to pay. Anyway, will y'all come on up so Dr. D can take a picture with you guys? We're really proud of them.
Why don't all the instructors come up also?
Yeah, nice to meet you. Get everyone staggered so that we can see everybody. Got Landon. Just a little bit perfect because then I can see her. I couldn't see the... One, two, three, and we get one, one, two, three. Congrats.
While they're going around, I just want, I just want to reiterate, when you're at the 6A level and you make All-State, it's a big deal. So, congratulations to all the instructors and all the students.
If I could just add one more thing really quick to the musicians and to the teachers, I'm sorry, I'm, why is your walking out the door? But I just think there are so many districts across the country who are cutting music programs, and I'm just so proud that not only do we have so many music programs to offer to our kids, but that our students are so successful, so good job, you guys.
Okay, next up, we have recognition of student counseling awards.
Yes, sir, and Rebecca Klein will be making those introductions for us.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board who were able to make it, glad to see you all. I actually am covering the next three items on the agenda, so if you don't mind, I'd like to just combine those if everybody's okay with that. My name is Rebecca Klein, and I am the Director of Assessment and Counseling. I also serve on the Three Rivers Counseling Association Board as the President, and I also serve on the task board, Texas School Counseling Association Board, as an emerging leader. I am excited to be here tonight to honor our district school counselors, along with several of our students who were nominated by their school counselors for the Three Rivers Counseling Association Student Tribute Awards. We also had a scholarship recipient, so we have lots of good things happening. The week of February 7th was declared National Professional School Counselor Week. San Angelo ISD and other school districts across the country celebrated school counselors and used it as a time to recognize the vital role school counselors play in the lives of our students. Our 39 school counselors are dedicated to creating comprehensive counseling programs that are proactive, responsive, and empower all students by guiding them through times of need and celebrating all the ways our students are smart. We are thankful for each of our school counselors for their dedication and commitment to helping our students achieve their hopes and dreams. We are also happy because they are the shining examples of how our people make the difference. These recognitions are just the start of the great things happening due to our SAI SD counselors. The first group I'd like to recognize are some students of ours that received awards for just overcoming and being resilient. We have four students that were selected for honors by the Three Rivers Counseling Association, with two receiv-, sorry, three receiving the Student Tribute Award, and one was awarded a scholarship. Unfortunately, these students were not able to join us, but I would like to at least list their names and what schools they're from. 4th grader Johnny Evans from Santa Rita Elementary School, 8th grader Teresa Carrasco from Lincoln Middle School, senior Manuel Manny Baltazar from Lakeview High School, and then we had our senior from Lakeview High School, Anna-Lias Amadon, who received our $250 scholarship, and she plans on going to... Lea Zamaron, who received our $250 scholarship. And she plans on going to Texas State to, um, actually major in music and mariachi. The next group that I would like to, um, recognize is our counselors. We are so proud to recognize three of our outstanding SAISD counselors who were honored as Counselors of the Year and Friend of Counseling by the Three Rivers Counseling Association this month. First, I'd like to, um, recognize Brittany Wagner from Glenn Middle School, winner of the George Plyler Middle School Counselor of the Year Award. Brittany, if you can come up? We also had Jenny Rupert of Lakeview High School, winner of the George Plyler High School Counselor of the Year Award, and Michelle Die, our At-Risk Coordinator at Lincoln Middle School, who was the winner of the Friend of Counseling Award because she not only helps the counselors, but she could be a counselor. She is amazing. It's dedicated staff like Mrs. Wagner, Ms. Rupert, and Ms. Die that exemplify how our people make the difference, and we are prid-, privileged to have them on our team. At this time, can we have a picture with Dr. Detloff and Ms. Wagner? I know. Sorry. Just think Jenny and Michelle are here with you in spirit, Ms. Wagner.
Thank you. We are also proud to recognize our Lone Star Middle School counselors and principal who receive the distinct honor of being awarded the Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in Texas or CREST Award. This is for excellence in counseling. Our Lone Star counselors are one of the first schools past I-35, west of I-35, to join the elite group from across the state. To receive a CREST Award, schools must demonstrate a commitment to improving the lives and achievement of students in academic, career, and personal social domains through a comprehensive school counseling program that is innovative and based on campus needs. Please join us in congratulating and thanking our outstanding CREST Award winners Amber Garza, Michael O'Brien, and I will include Amyla Master, our principal, because she is a key piece. We are very proud of this. We have been working towards this for several years, so congratulations.
Rebecca, you should go join.
Okay.
Yep.
So, let, let's have it noted and let's also congratulate Rebecca for that as well.
Okay. And Dr. Kassaris, you get an award for anything? Are these your students?
Some of them actually were.
Okay. I'm talking about Dr. Leslie Kassaris that does the, helps, I guess trains the counselors at ASU, so I'm...
I'm on their advisory.
On the advisory committee. Well, I appreciate all you did to help our counselors at SAISD and all your support of SAISD. All right. Uh, we're ready to move on with our agenda now. We have, uh, our minutes for January 10, 2022, for our special finance pre-agenda meeting, and January 18, 2022, our regular board meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Gallegos and a second by Dr. Kingman, uh, on this particular agenda item. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. The motion passes. Uh, this is the time that I mentioned in my earlier, uh, script that, uh, we will hear public comments for any topics not on the agenda. If there's anyone here to make such comments. Uh, no one had signed up and no one's coming forward, so, uh, we'll move on. We now have reports. We have our student enrollment report. Uh, Dr. McFarlane?
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. Our enrollment report is for the 22nd Monday of the school year, and that showed that we had 6,395 in the elementary level, 3,188 at the middle school level, and 4,085 at the high school level, for a total of 13,729 in enrollment. And in comparison to this exact same timing of last year, that is down about 219. Any questions I can answer?
No, sir. Thank you for being here. Uh, and Dr. Detloff and Dr. Ritter, you're up next then for our campus review of evidence reports and update on, part of our update on academic programs.
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, uh, it continues, uh, to be a privilege to hear from our campus leadership and campus principals, uh, as we hear from them on how they are creating the conditions for success for our students, uh, in SAISD. Uh, we are delighted that they've been able to make a personal connection, uh, with our board members during these presentations, uh, and also connect to our board goals. Uh, they will be sharing campus celebrations, uh, sharing unique, uh, initiatives, uh, that their campus possesses and utilizes, and also, uh, just academic success and the growth of their students, uh, over time at their individual campuses. So, we're delighted to have, uh, three incredible leaders here, and, uh, we look forward to hearing their remarks. And I will turn it over to Dr. Ritter.
Thank you, Dr. Detloff, um, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. We're pleased to have three more of our wonderful elementary campus principals with us this evening to share the work they are doing to support all of the ways our students are smart in San Angelo ISD. Our principals tonight will be highlighting points of pride, areas they are viewing with concern, and how they are looking forward with hope to maximize levels of student success. Education after a pandemic has caused all of us as educators to rethink how we are identifying student needs, areas of strength, and how we are ensuring that we are creating plans for intervention using the most effective and research-proven strategies to address the academic needs we are seeing with our students. We also realize that it is more important than ever to assess the social, emotional well-being of our students and to find ways to involve all of our students in enrichment activities that cause them to experience success and ownership of their learning in all areas. Our students are showing incredible growth in reading and math, and many of them have shown over an expected year's growth or more in just the five months that they have been in school so far this year. The initiatives that our teachers are following through, the support the board has provided in reading and math are resulting in impressive gains. We have certainly learned that there is no replacement for in-person instruction for foundational skills that our students need for their future success. So, I will now turn it over to our principals for them to highlight the amazing points of pride from their campuses. We thank these leaders for everything they do to empower students to accomplish their hopes and dreams for their future. This evening, we have Dr. John Ritter from McGill Elementary School, Lori Barton from Fort Concho Elementary School, and Heidi Wurzewski from Bonham Elementary School. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter. I appreciate that. And happy anniversary. I just wanted to say, uh, this is our anniversary and we appreciate the opportunity to spend it together tonight. So, uh, we do appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board, we do really appreciate the opportunity to share our school stories. All of our schools are unique, but we're all going in the same direction. And, uh, so it's, I think it's important to know, uh, a little bit about what makes our schools unique. So, let me see if I can figure this out. At McGill Elementary, we are a rainbow of possibilities. And the reason we came up with that theme is because of all the storms of the last couple of years, we came with our design team this summer and decided, you know, what would be a positive message? And it's a rainbow of possibilities. It's open. It's wide open to all of our students. So, that's our theme this year. Who are we? Well, our campus mission is to create an environment that educates, empowers, and equips lifelong learners to achieve their personal best and build their social, emotional, and physical well-being. Again, a rainbow of possibilities is our theme this year. We have 282 kids, and I have 283. We added one today. Uh, and we do have a pre-K program that we're very proud of. Points of pride, uh, a first point of pride, and we were with my leadership team, we were talking about this, and I'm really, really proud of our teacher retention. But more than teacher retention, it is staff, uh, stability, I think, because, uh, we have, um, teachers that have been there and you'll see on, I don't know if you can read that, and I surely can't read it, but we've had, uh, teachers there. The first one, Lisa Taclet, has been there 25 years. Uh, Theresa Gilbert is one of our paraprofessionals. She's a, an interventionist, an intervening paraprofessional. She's been there 22 years. Michelle Juarez has been there 36 years. They don't want to leave McGill. Uh, we have our custodians, our cafeteria workers. It's a, it's a, uh, culture of continuity. Students that start off in pre-K at McGill see the same people when they, when they walk that, uh, that, that graduation, uh, in fifth grade. We value our teachers and their craft. Uh, another thing, I'm really pleased with the, uh, relationship that we have with Angelo State. Uh, we're very strategic and we're very intentional when we place our, uh, student teachers, our clinical teachers, with the, uh, cooperating teachers at our school. So that, when we have an opportunity to grow, and I'm going to borrow a line from Dr. Detloff, he said, whenever you lose somebody, it's always an opportunity to get better. And, uh, so when we place these student teachers, these clinical teachers from ASU with our, uh, superlative teachers, they step right in. They know the culture. They know the, uh, guided reading strategies. They can step right in as, uh, brand-new teachers and hit the ground running. So, we don't lose a lot of ground that way. So, we're very proud of that as well. Other points of pride is our kindness movement. This is, uh, this is an initiative we started three years ago. This young man right here is the I in kind. So, when we catch, uh, students being, uh, nice to each other or doing something helpful, we, uh, we, uh, recognize them, sometimes get their picture. Well, that'll be in our yearbook, sometimes on our website. They're the I in kind. Uh, they get caught doing random acts of kindness. They, uh, they get kindness charms. We recognize them on our morning show. Uh, at our rallies, we have, um, uh, monthly rallies that we recognize students for positive gains as well. Uh, in that middle is goal setting. Our instructional coach, counselor, and whenever I can, I, uh, have conferences with all of our, every one of our third, fourth, and fifth grade students talking about goals. We want them, we look at their, uh, map data, where they are. We'll show them their data. We'll talk about how they can get better, and we, uh, they set a goal. A lot of times, the goal is, I'm going to take my time. I'm going to do a little bit, I'm going to work a little bit harder next time, or I'm going to answer the questions that I know first and then go back into the, to the other ones. So, those are some of the strategies that come out. But I think what is woven through all of this is the relationship piece. The students at McGill know every teacher, and they know every administrator of the leadership team. They know me. They know our counselor, Trish Me-, uh, Michaela Guevara, and our, um, instructional coach, Trish Meads. It's, there's no surprise that's when someone, when we have conversations with kids. They know that we care about them. We're very proud of our pre-K. We hold that, uh, program up as an exemplary, uh, program. We are honored to be able to serve the smallest students of SAISD, and we truly believe that we do have a hand in, uh, starting their education in a positive learning environment. Um, I was having, I talked with Chloe McBee this, today, when, you know, after school, and we were just talking, and she was saying, you know, these kids are, they're, we provide them with the skills ready for kindergarten. But beyond that, I think what we do is we plant that seed of the love for, for learning in, uh, in pre-K. So, they, they, they are lifelong learners starting in pre-K. So, our, uh, English Language Arts map data, as you can see, um, again, I can't read that, but, uh, but you can see our, we met our goals in third and fourth grade projected growth. The fifth grade did not meet the projected growth. And, uh, but, you know, whereas that's a point of concern, it is something that I think that we've addressed, because there are other measures that you'll see later on in the presentation that indicate that we have made growth. Um, this is one of those days, and, um, on that, uh, reading testing day is when we were having some complete, computer glitches nationwide. And, I mean, some, some, uh, reading, uh, tests, they just, the teachers decided to go back and punt. Well, we muscled through it. We, we muscled through it. We did it so we could see the data. Uh, we have adjusted our interventionist schedule so that we can make sure we meet the, uh, the students that did not meet their goal. We can, we can, uh, intervene with them. That's another point I would like to make is, uh, a point of pride is our interventionists. We were really blessed this year to have some really strong interventionists. They're both retired teachers. Uh, Ms. Peterson and Ms. Muller are awesome interventionists. Ms. Muller does, uh, reading. Ms. Peterson does math, and, uh, they see, we, they see about 56 kids a day through intervention. So, uh, we, we motor those kids through there in a, on a schedule, and, uh, these teachers are really making some, uh, serious progress with these kids. And I think we're going to see some really, uh, some gaps close. In our math map data, we met our goal in, uh, fourth and fifth grade this time. Third grade math was slightly under projected growth, but this grade level is focused on math fact fluency. And the intervention program that, again, that Ms. Peterson is working, do the math, uh, continues the support to increase student growth. So, I think we're going to make those, uh, we're going to catch up there and make those goals. They were just slightly under. Next up's the guided reading. Our NSGRA data, as you can see, every, I don't know if you can see that from this, from this graph, but I'm going to tell you, every one of our students that were tested in, uh, first through fifth grade in NSGRA made growth. Every one of them, 100%. Our goal is, our goal is for every, uh, every grade level to have 80% of their, of the grade level, on grade level, uh, by the time the, the school year ends, the school year ends. So, we're proud of our teachers and their mastery in teaching phonemic awareness and guided reading. Again, this is the, uh, the resources that y'all have provided for us. Our teachers used, uh, the guided reading, the fonte simpelnel with fidelity. Uh, you will walk in any classroom at any time, especially in the mornings when we do our reading, and our teachers are, they're pulling groups. There are, uh, other kids are busy doing, uh, activities that support their reading. What we're working on, we are continuing to work on professional learning communities that are data-driven and collaborative, uh, planning. We are focused on our who, our students that we need, that, uh, students and their needs. Um, we're also spotlighting children's academic and non-academic achievements, uh, finding, as Dr. Ritter said earlier, uh, capitalizing on their smartness, what these kids are really, really good at. And we saw evidence of that with these high school students. That's what we're trying to do, is capitalize on, uh, the smartness of these, uh, our elementary students and highlight their achievements. Um, quarterly, we have meritorious Mustangs that, uh, who are nominated by their classmates. Their classmates, if they're older and they're able to, they'll write, uh, a little testimonial nominating a student, uh, that they think exemplifies what a meritorious Mustang is. Uh, the littler ones, they will go up to their teacher and they say, I want to nominate so-and-so because I think they're, they're an awesome friend and they've been doing, uh, nice things. So, and then we recognize them quarterly and we, uh, they would recognize them at our, uh, quarterly rallies and... rallies, and also, we have a little meritorious Mustang lunch with the admin team. We also are working on social, emotional learning with character trait lessons, lunch bunch. This is our counselor mainly. Ms. Guavara does a phenomenal job, and I should say, Ms. Guavara, this is another one of those, she went through sixth grade at McGill and then came back as our counselor. So, she's, she absolutely has buy-in and wants everything to be wonderful at McGill, and she's, she's an awesome, awesome counselor. Let's see, what are we looking forward to? We are looking forward to maintaining our positive culture, and that's the thing with McGill. I mean, if you walk in the building, you're going to feel a positive culture. It exudes positivity, and like I said, our kids are happy, they love going to school. We work really hard to develop those relationships with kid-to-kid, teacher-to-kid, administrator-to-kid, and teacher and administrator-to-parent. We welcome parents to come up, and, you know, if they have an issue, they have a question, call us and we'll talk to them about it. Also, we're working on, looking forward to quality planning with focus on design qualities. Our goal is for our mustangs to leave McGill confident and future-ready for middle school. We continue to utilize the resources that are provided by y'all, we appreciate that. And some of the, some of the resources, like the Scholastic coaching for our teachers, has paid huge dividends, and also the Mass Solutions coaching. Those consultants come in and work directly with our teachers, and it's really making a difference in our teaching instruction. And highlighting student growth and talents in a variety of creative ways. That's what we try to do, and we're looking forward to doing that in the future. Oops, there we are. McGill.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ritter. Any board team have any questions or comments? We do, we really are enjoying these presentations by our principals, and we appreciate you taking time to tell us about what's going on at McGill, and this gives us a lot more to go on, except, you know, rather than just getting a report at end of the year somewhere that's just graphs and charts, and this gives us a lot more hands-on. So, we appreciate you coming and all.
We appreciate y'all giving us the opportunity to do this. Instead of a one-shot, one-day picture, this is a more of a, more of a, I guess, a well-rounded picture of our schools, and we appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Max, I do have, sorry, Dr. Ritter, I do have a question. Sorry. So, you're one of our pre-K campuses?
Yes.
When are, when you're seeing your own pre-K kids in kindergarten, and you're comparing those to the, your other, I mean, you're, what are you, 76, 75% socioeconomic disadvantage?
Yeah.
When you're seeing your kindergartners coming out of our pre-K program versus other pre-K programs that that socioeconomic disadvantage group is having access to, are you feeling like they're better prepared for your kindergarten?
Yes, and a big part of it is what I was talking about. I mean, it's the culture that, and our pre-K teachers are really, really good. Like I was talking about, I had this conversation, and just happened to have this conversation earlier today with Ms. McBee, and she was talking about having her kids ready to go, you know, and ready for kindergarten, those are the words that she used. When our kids come out, they're ready for kindergarten. And yes, I am seeing a big difference in, I mean, you know, especially coming from our school, because it's all aligned. I mean, we have conversations, we have alignment meetings all the time, and so, our kindergarten teachers know, I mean, our pre-K teachers know what our kindergarten teachers expect, and it bumps her out of the line.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter.
Good evening, Mr. Parker. If I could speak as well as the seniors that were up here and stuff, I wouldn't be, I don't know, I'm nervous, I know y'all. But you made me nervous, you were starting talking about things that I was like, I should have added that to my presentation.
Well, as you, as you, as you're a principal longer, you'll get the practice down.
I don't think I'm going to be one that long, but thank you. Okay, so, our first slide says Fort Concho I University. Imagine, innovate, and inspire. We took it upon ourselves to make ourselves a university, just because we really have a focus on college readiness. And our launch every day, and has been for 15 years, is 100% every day and every way, attendance, behavior, and classwork. So, those are the goals that we set with our kids, and we end our morning show with, and it covers about everything you need to cover with a child that gets into the office. You know, are we talking about your attendance, your behavior, or your classwork? I listed on my main slide the people that truly make a difference in SISD or at Fort Concho. My counselor, Mandy Hooker, who takes care of our social, emotional learning with our students. Jenny Willdie, our instructional coach, thank you for interventionists this year. We have Tessa Landen, who's been a great asset to our team. And then also, our instructional aides, Allison Knight and Carla Moreno. Even though they're instructional aides, they are trained in the interventions that we're using for kids, and without this team, we wouldn't be seeing the gains from the COVID laps or whatever that we are seeing. So, I wanted to give a shout-out to them. We have 464 students, and we are both a neighborhood campus and a GT magnet school. So, we have both spectrums of the realm of education that we're working with. We want to make sure that we keep our GT kids engaged and moving forward, and accelerating their learning and opportunities while not dismissing our neighborhood kids or our kids that are struggling some. So, we want to make sure that we're getting the enrichment part in there and also the instruction. Things that are going well for our campus, it's who we are, it's what we do. We have several established programs, distinguished scholars for our fifth grade and self-managers, community outreach. We have a good connection with Angelo State University, where we take our fifth graders up there about every six to eight weeks, and they go to a math class, a science class, check out the cafeteria for all the food you can eat for $5, and that sells them to go to ASU. They look at dorm rooms, they go to a basketball game, a football game, and so, we try to take advantage and let kids whose parents don't say, you're going to A&amp;M the day they're born, or you're going to D or something, that don't have those conversations about colleges, know what a gift we have with Angelo State University here, and for first-generation students going to college, they have an opportunity to almost go, expose that and let them know that. Starbase, thank you for that, our fifth graders are there right now, and it's a treasure that we get to do that with Goodfill Air. Other things are our clubs, Lego Robotics Chess Club, excuse me, Chess Club, grade-level musicals, drama clubs, Spirit Squad, Career and Technology Labs, STEM Labs, Language Acquisition Lab, our piano percussion and violin lessons that we offer, mariachi, rock band, parent involvement, our sock hop hoedown, Steam Night, art show, tour of lights for us to read. Yeah, so those are some things we have in place that are, as far as community outreach and opportunities for our parents to be involved. Okay, I'll breathe. Systems that, systems that we have in place that are going really well are our PLCs. The teachers have a two-hour PLC time every week to where we work, they look at lesson designs, tracking student by student, skill by skill, and designing lessons, knowing exactly what they're supposed to be teaching, and making those plans. We also really stress student goal-setting, where the teachers sit with each kid, even in first grade on through fifth grade, to talk about setting goals for math facts, for sight words, for reading, or proving what they did on the STAR test last year to go for next year. The goal-setting and student goal-setting, and then being able to articulate that with their parents, and that is the focus that we. Student engagement during PLCs, we focus on the learner profile, just like the design qualities, enrichment, passion projects, STEAM labs, and community partnerships. So, those are things that I feel like we've got in place, pretty solid, but every year, our administrative team looks at every system that we've got and sees ways to add, and see where we can make improvements. These are some of the, thank you, dry mouth when you get up, talk all day, and then. So, these are just some pictures of some of the things that celebrate students. The picture up in the right, the third grader's just at the Historical Life Museum over at the stables. We give them every opportunity to create and present to their parents. During COVID, we had, if the presentations were in the classroom, parents zoomed in so they could be a part of that. Now that we're opening up a little bit, and we have a little bit more space, parents are getting more joy these activities. Now, looking at data, this is our next steps to guided reading data. Turn it down. Okay. Well, his voice was so loud, I was like. So, our next steps to guided reading, this is our reading program. We've had from 80% to 82% growth, but when we're looking at this data, and the last page that we're going to get to is how we use this data and other points of data. A lot of our children in third grade, we call it they Z-out, so they max out at the guided reading level. So, in third grade, a lot of them drop out from having a guided reading, guided instruction, to comprehension clubs and research projects and things like that. So, they're learning to read, and their reading levels go up, but it's not necessarily anything that we track because they've already Z-ed out, they've mastered that. So, some of the data that shows that that percentage is going down is because we're taking a group of kids out of that that are not in that group of kids that we're still using guided reading for. For map growth, for our measure of academic progress, we showed growth in every area, and there again, when we look at our map data, we have to be careful because we have a lot of GT kids or advanced kids that are high achieving but low growth, because they've already, they're already at a 7th or A3 level, so you don't see that, and it kind of skews the results. And we have a lot of students who are high growth but low achievement, but those are the kids that we're looking for those interventions and things for. So, when we look at the data, we really have to look student by student, skill by skill, and see what that's saying. So, this next sheet here, and that's a little hard for you to see, but if you follow the colors, what we do, this is, this is our data tracker, and on the far side, the kids' names are there. If they are in special ed or LLI or any kind of intervention, that would be listed over to the left. But if you look at like line one, and you're going across, that's a student who's Z-ed out at the end of fourth grade, that's their guided reading score. We have two, a program that we use for STAR reading and STAR math that give us a growth measure. The student went from a 6.0 to a 5.9, so kind of stayed the same. But then, if you look across here at their reading map, blues and greens mean that they're working at a high level, and we're not worried about them not passing the state test or not doing well in school. So, went down in the winter, excuse me, a little bit, but if you look over here, we also put their report card grades in there. And so, if they're green all the way across or blue, they should have, their report cards should reflect that. If they're not, their report cards should reflect that as well. And we have noticed, not last year because we didn't have the STAR, but before that, we're within 10 points of our report cards giving us pretty much data on how they're, how well they're going to perform on the STAR test. So, if you look at student one and two, we're not worried about them. Student three down here, if you go over to their math, I don't know if you can see that, but you can see a little yellow, they were below level at the beginning of the year, but went from a 4.6 to a 5.9. And if you go over, their report card grades are 98 and 99, and their STAR in fourth grade was 74. So, we're looking at that student to make sure that he's got that same growth, we're projecting high growth for all of our kids from last year. So, I don't know if you can see this, dropped down to the second block of red students. And the top one, who was in the red with their guided reading as they finished fourth grade and going into fifth, beginning of fifth grade, their reading level's at 2.3. Two years ago, when we had COVID, and we started looking at data a little bit differently, we were really focusing on the intervention given our kids. So, this student was in fourth grade on the second grade reading level. We started digging a little deeper and went back to things like teaching phonics skills, teaching second grade level skills that she had missed because she's OHI for ADD and just behind. So, for two years, she wasn't really getting fourth grade curriculum, she was getting second and third grade curriculum. We look across, excuse me, she grew from a 2.3 to a 4.5. She's still a fifth grader, but she grew two years' growth in three months of fifth grade. First, I think it goes back to my interventionist and my aides who are working with her specifically on skills that she was missing, and she was able to put that together and start making progress. And her report cards are at a 73 and 78, even though she made a 47 on the STAR last year. So, we're really thinking that she's going to make huge, huge gains on the STAR this year. The same with her math, she was at a 1.4 at the beginning of the year and tested out at a 4.7. So, this is how we plug that data, all these data points into one sheet and track our kids. Right below her is a special ed student who still struggles, and if you see her scores below that, she's at a 1.7 to a 1.8. She made a 31 on the STAR last year. Her scores, the 72 and the 70 are from her IEP and special ed, so they don't necessarily reflect what she's going to do on the STAR. We think if you're at a 31, we can make growth and get you to a 42 or something before the, before the end of the year. But we're still seeing growth on specific skills, and we have to be realistic when we're looking at some of these kids that may never pass the state test, but we're still looking for a year's growth in something. That's what we're tracking. So, when we go, after we look at this sheet, and do you have any questions about this? You can kind of tell by the colors if it kind of, if there's an anomaly because there's, it's all red, and then you've got some green report cards or blue report cards, we have a big discussion on that, like, how is that happening when they're in the red and they're on a tier three, which the first column there is if they're tier one, tier two. So, the last slide we've got is where we dig deeper, and this is our fifth grade multi-tier systems of support data. And so, once again, to the left would be the students' names, and when we have our PLC meetings and our data meetings, we're looking at each student, we're looking at the LA intervention that they've got and a math intervention, who's giving the intervention, how many minutes per day, and how many days a week. So, we're really hyper-focused in on specific skills for each student to see if we can show growth, and that's what the students are tracking and the teachers. So, like I said, we've got lots of room for growth on lots of kids, and we're looking and anticipating to have huge growth this year. And points of pride, we celebrate our students' smartnesses through STEAM and enrichment, and we've got just a little short video that I guess you're going to start, and this just gives you an overview for those of you who have not been on our campus, the many opportunities that we use the learner profile and students' smartnesses to make school fun and a place that they want to come, and that we're, feel like we have a very positive and great culture at Fort Concho, and that we address the needs of all of our kids. Fort Concho I University offers all students daily experiences to imagine, innovate, and inspire through science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Here's a small glimpse of our superheroes in action. From robotics and video design and production to Z-Space augmented and virtual reality Kids use problem-based learning in math and science in the classrooms and the hallways. Laser technology, alternative energy with windmill design are just a few of the STEAM labs provided for our older students. Other labs include flight technology with rocket launching and marketing and design labs, as well as circuitry, virtual architecture, and CAD labs. Additional labs include our famous Art Lab, alternative energy with solar panel design, flight technology with Kerbal EDU, piano and recording studio, alternative energy with electrical car design, forensic.
science, and arcade design challenge lab. Our performing arts programs include violin and percussion, drama club, rock band in mariachi, and our fabulous Fort Concho spirit squad. In Little Big Town, our students role-play through real-world experiences at our diner, our bank, and on our construction site. Other favorites include performing for their friends at the puppet theater, taking their pet to the vet, grocery shopping, or getting their eyes examined while applying for their driver's license before they hit the road to transportation. Whether it's learning through Legos, cooking in the kitchen, creating in the STEM lab, gardening outside, or just learning to sew, these superheroes are always on the go.
So, that's us.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Anybody have any questions? She's already sat down, but I appreciate you being here. And are we ready to go next?
Okay. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to talk a little bit about our schools. And I am here today to talk about Bonham. We've got enrollment of about 521 students. This year, we chose our theme to be Discover Bonham. And we selected that theme because, you know, in the midst of COVID, we wanted to come up with a theme to kind of welcome our parents back. So, as we were having parents kind of come back into the schools, back into some of the events with us, we thought that would be a great way to say, come and discover us again. We also felt after we had some, you know, COVID and different things going on, that we needed a time to kind of discover our students and where they were at and what they needed. So, it was a time to, a kind of two-prong for our theme, a way to welcome parents back and a way for us to look at the needs of our students, discover their needs. Our mission is to provide each student with a meaningful and challenging education that prepares him or her to graduate from high school as a lifelong learner. Our focus this year was to kind of have staff reflect and think about their passions and why they come to school each day. So, we had our staff write what their why is and why they come to school. For me, I wrote that I support educators and promote a love of learning so that we can grow and spread the joy of learning. We did this with all of our teachers. And I also included Mr. Eskew, our assistant principal. He builds capacity in others to increase the impact on students. So, each of our teachers wrote their why and why it's important for them to come to school each day and what they're hoping to contribute to education. And they have their whys posted outside their doors for their students to see and for other staff members and community members as they come in. We find this, you know, really beneficial throughout the year because we do reflect on our why and go back and visit that throughout the year. How does that align to our purpose? And how does that align to our... One of the great things about Bonham is we work really hard to provide a sense of community and our Rattler pride. And so, we have here a couple of events that we have pictured. We've got open house. We've got a Veterans Day walk, Fall Festival, Winter Festivals, just trying to get our families and our community involved in school and being a part of both the academic and the fun side of being on campus. We also have some of our club activities presented where our students have the opportunity to pick and select student choice. So, they can, might choose to do a club with crafts, running, cooking, or, you know, there's lots of different choices. We feel this is a great opportunity for all kids to celebrate the various ways to show that they are smart and to give them some choice what they're doing each week at school. As we look at our measure of academic progress data, our MAP data, you can see here that we did have increased growth in all of our subjects and tested grade levels. We are excited that according to our MAP data, our measure of academic progress, we exceeded some of the expected growth in some areas, like third grade math and our fifth grade science. Look, this is our next steps in guided reading, this data. Looking here, we did have an increase in all of our grade levels and our overall average is about 70%. Our students are on grade level in next steps in guided reading. And this has been a really beneficial time to all of our students because they do meet with teachers in small groups on their individual reading levels, and they get specific instruction on what they need to work on. So, this has been a very valuable program to the success of our students is they are really able to work with teachers on their levels. And if looking at all of that data, we too track our data. And so, we gather up our MAP, our next steps, our M class, our state assessment, all of that data, we kind of gather up in one place on this worksheet on the left. And it gives us a place where we can look at each specific student. It gives us an opportunity where we can see their specific strengths, their weaknesses for each child. And we also, as you scroll further on to the right-hand side over there, it gives a chance for teachers to document what their interventions are, how, what kind of tutoring they need, and then just really to track that progress so that we can get a whole picture of the child. All of this data is great, but, you know, some students are more successful on computer-based assessments while other students may do better in a face-to-face assessment. So, it's important that we look at those various data points and take all that into consideration. Up in the right-hand corner, there is an example of our unit assessments that we put into a Jeforia. And we are able to look at the growth for each child on specific skills. And this is really beneficial because the MAP data helps us to look at where students were at at certain times of the year. But this helps us to track progress on more of a weekly and a more regular basis so that we can see if they have made growth since they took that. We also have our students track their data and set their goals. So, having them be a part of that process is really valuable to them because they are able to give feedback into, you know, what they want to work on and to make that personal for themselves. Okay. A couple of things that we are working on. We are working on our multi-tiered system of supports, trying to just look at the interventions that we have in place, what's effective, what's working, and what do we need to change for the group of children that we have. As you've seen from our data, it's all very varied, and that varies from class to class and from group to group. So, what works one year, we may need to change up a little for another group of students. So, working on that multi-tiered system of supports, we will continue to do that. And we will continue to change to meet the needs of our students throughout the year based on our data. We are also looking at ways to continue to engage our students in meaningful ways to meet their specific academic needs. So, you know, kids are different. Everybody needs different, different things. Some need some social, emotional supports. So, we provide different things to help address those specific needs that students might have. And then what is working? Our professional learning communities, we meet weekly with our teachers to sit and plan with them and then look at, you know, what's working, what's not working, what do we need to change. We also look at their data to determine who's making progress and what we need, might need to change or what we might need to go back and reteach. Our design days that the district provides, those have been really instrumental. That gives our teachers a great opportunity to sit and collaborate and to be able to have that time to not only look on plans for the immediate next few weeks, but also to plan into the next nine weeks. Our campus interventionist has also, like they said, played a big part in that because they are able to pull small groups based on those children's needs. And so, just having that small group has been really beneficial. And having that specific person, I mean, we really lucked out. We got a very experienced educator that is really able to, well, she was a former kindergarten teacher. And so, you know, when we're talking about helping to build the building blocks for students that are having difficulty with reading, you know, that's, that's the perfect person for that, to be able to, you know, help build that up. So, we've got just a little video here that just highlights one of the things that we do on Fridays, as we have like a fortunate Friday. And our office group kind of gives feedback on to our staff on some things that are going well. And we kind of set a target for what we're looking for. And so, this gives a great way to kind of highlight some of the great things that are going on each week. And so, here's an example of just some things that, one of our videos we did one week highlighting some of the great things that we were looking at that week. So... Again, just a fun way that we kind of thank our staff for what they do and that we are able to highlight some of the great things that we see when they go into their classrooms. So, I just want to thank you all for taking the time to listen about our schools. It's been a great opportunity to get to share with, with all of the board members and other community members the great things that we have happening.
I can't get my mic to work. I'm Miss Earth Wiki. Excellent presentation. Thank you so much. And thank you to all three of you for sharing your schools with us. And I really should have asked all of you, but I always like to ask, what can we as a board do to support all the great work that you're doing and make it better or easier for you and your staff?
We just feel really fortunate. I think we have a great board that's really supportive to the needs and really receptive to what, not only what we say as principals, but, you know, what the staff at the administration building conveys to you. So, we appreciate that. And, you know, I think that the, what you all have given us and just you being receptive when we do have ideas, we appreciate that. So, and I thank you for your time as well. So, thank you.
And I'll address this to all of you. I know there's, we understand, I don't know the public understands, the huge obstacles that COVID has placed on you, not just having students there and whether it's going to be virtual learning or in-class learning, but just having, keeping staffed up and with your teachers being there. But I know that we've, we've approved other things to help our schools. And one of those, but it really has to do more with your teachers than it does with the students is the program Engage to Learn. Is that something that you've even had, is it right now, is that just a burden? Or is it something that is helping you, that you think is worthwhile or something we need to put on pause? What, anybody want to speak to that?
Let me just say that I'm a huge Engage to Learn fan. We had our, our coach came this last Friday, wasn't it, Cherie? Yeah. And Ms. Braden is really instrumental in making that, and she sits there with us. She's, she's a, she's an elbow partner with that coaching and makes sure that that stuff gets, gets implemented. And it's really good. It enables me to focus on what I need to focus on, and it gives me strategies to be able to do that and tools to be able to track it. I mean, it's, it's a personal thing. It's a personal journey for me. And I, for one, just for me, I think it's a wonderful thing. And I really appreciate the opportunity for the coaches to come in and talk and for Ms. Braden to come in and, and help drive that as well. Just my opinion.
I just want to thank all of you all for being here as well. Thank you all. We know that you all do have a lot of things on your plate and coming and talking to us is one more thing. So, we really appreciate that. We appreciate what you all are doing for all of our kids in the district. Just to highlight things that I heard you all say was the built-in instruction time, the interventionist, obviously some of the programs. And maybe to be even more precise or particular than what Amy was just saying, like those interventionists and those that built-in PLC time, as far as a board, what are the things, are those the most important things we can give you to help with where we are right now as a district? Yes, okay.
And be sure to give us your comments. You can, you can email any of us anytime there's something we can help with. But one thing that the board is really trying to, has an interest in is one thing that Dr. Ritterd mentioned, and that is stability, retention of teachers. We have, we know there's becoming to be a shortage of teachers. If we can't manufacture new teachers quickly, we want to try to hold on to the ones we have. So, if there's anything that you, that we can do to help your teachers show our appreciation or to help them with their stress levels or whatever that will, that maybe will encourage them to stay with the profession, let us know that too because we understand just the, I won't say, the slogan that we sometimes use, "Our teachers make the difference." We know that's true. We know it makes a difference to you as principals. It makes a difference to our admin team. It certainly makes a difference to these students. And so, let us know anything we can do to help your teachers and your staff. Okay? Again, I reiterate what I've said and what Dr. Kingman and all the rest of the board said. We appreciate you being here. These reviews have been something very beneficial. Hopefully, it'll be something that we'll just keep on our agenda for years to come. All right? Thank you. Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we just do this? Why don't we take a 10-minute break? And then he's, Dr. Kingman's got to make a few phone calls, and then we'll come back. The agenda's pretty short, and I think we can finish it fairly quickly. But let's take a quick five or 10-minute break. Okay, we'll go back on the record. I think our board team is back. So, let's go on with our agenda. I don't know, Dr. Detloff, if there's anything you need to announce on our partnership with Goodfellow?
Yes, sir. Just a quick report. You heard from our campus principals about even at the campus level, the robust partnerships with Goodfellow Air Force Base, including our STAR base initiative for fifth-grade students. We continued those partnerships last week on Tuesday. We met with Goodfellow Command and our leadership team and discussed options for pre-kindergarten students in our district. So, again, during our principal presentations, we heard of the impact that our learning initiatives and getting our, our young three and four-year-olds in school, the academic success that that leads to in their future careers and the stability of that. We are partnering with Goodfellow Air Force Base to look at pre-K initiatives, even perhaps... We are partnering with Goodfellow Air Force Base to look at pre-K initiatives, even perhaps on base. So those discussions are ongoing. From the Goodfellow Command, at our Tuesday meeting, we had the 17th Training Wing Vice Wing Commander, Colonel James Van Lysen. We also had Chad Dow, the Director of Staff at the 17th Training Wing. We had the Community Partnership Specialist, Matt Stensky with us. We also had the Group Commander, Colonel Eugene Moore, Mission Support Deputy Director, Mark Maxfield, and of course, our great Goodfellow School Liaison, Teresa Goodwin. So our partnership continues, and we had a very productive meeting with our Command at Goodfellow Air Force Base last Tuesday. Thank you, sir.
All right. We have three consent items on our consent item agenda that we need to consider. One is donations. Two is Consider Bid Number 20-014 for curriculum and instruction materials. And the third is Consider Superintendent's Recommendations for Personnel for School Year 2021. But that was put on in, in the event we might have someone that we need to consider, and I'm being told we don't. So we only have the two items, donations and Consider Bid Number 20-014, curriculum instruction materials. Do I hear a bid to approve, I mean, a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a, a motion by Mr. Gallegos, a second by Dr. Kingman to, for this particular agenda item. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Consider Bills Accounts and Financial Statements. Dr. McFarland discussed that with us last week. Do we have a motion to approve?
Just as a reminder to our viewing public, we have two meetings every month in our pre-agenda meeting. We go through our bills, accounts, and financial statements. And if you go to a link on our website under Financial Transparency, you can see all of our statements, including our checkbook for your review. But given all that, I would make a motion to approve our bills, financial, and accounts, bills, accounts, and financial statements from January of 2022.
I'll second.
Right. Motion by Dr. Kingman, a second by Ms. Maizelle Flint. Any other board discussion? Any public comment? All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Dr. Gomez, you're up again. Consider Employee Compensation During Emergency School Closure.
Yes, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. You have the full resolution in your board packet. It's for the discussion of the wage payments during the closure on February 3rd and 4th. As most employees were instructed not to report to work, contractual and non-contractual salaried and non-salaried employees, and those employees may suffer a loss of payment if the district is closed. We ask that you authorize continued wage payment to all regular employees who were instructed to not report to work during the emergency closure.
Can I just ask a quick question? So on, this really is for our, for our, I know we're listing everyone, but when we, just from my understanding, when we close a school for the weather or whatever, our teachers, do we need this?
We do.
For our teachers as well?
We need it for all staff. When the calendar was changed, when there was the removal of designated bad weather days, that's why it's in conjunction with TASB and our legal counsel. And anytime there's a closure, we have to bring it forward to you. You're the authority designated by Texas Education Code, but we do have to bring forward a resolution to continued payment when staff are idled.
So even though our minutes are still above, so just to clarify, just so everyone's aware, our minutes are still above the required minutes for the year, but even though we are still above that required minutes, we're having to make this resolution?
We just have to pass the resolution so that we can go ahead and continue to authorize payment to those employees.
And this includes all employees, including the hourly employees?
Yes. All regular employees. I do need to clarify, all regular employees, not, that doesn't necessarily include temporary employees, because that, that does change it. All regular employees who were instructed not to report to work due to the emergency closure.
I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution, which addresses all regular employee compensation during emergency school closures outlined by Dr. Gomez. Is there a second?
Second.
A second's been made by Dr., by Mr. Gallegos. Is there any other board discussion on this matter? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. All right. We need to go into closed session for really about five minutes to discuss superintendent evaluation contract and salary. We can do that under Texas Government Code having to do with personnel, 551.074. So I'm going to, what's the word? Can we take a break from our meeting right here? And we'll be, we'll be, we'll be back in a few minutes. Okay? All right, we're back from closed session. We took no action, we took no votes. And unless there's anybody else that has anything, and I'm not looking for hands, the meeting will now be adjourned. Thanks for being here.